Call us mean order with the blood of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Paul Jenderski.
Here.
Jamie Kendall.
Present.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Edgar Tiedoff.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Present.
Darcy McSwain.
Present.
Jennifer Rosser Nesbit.
Present.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
One adjustment, letter E, resolution twenty-five dash seven, signatory authority for US development, USDA rural development.
Said twenty-five dash seven?
That is correct.
Any motion for that?
I'll make a motion for, uh, resolution twenty-five dash seven to put on the agenda.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any announcements, public comment? Yes, sir.
Quick update from the county, uh, there's not a whole lot going on, it's been pretty quiet. Right now, we're in the middle of, uh, contract negotiations with all the unions, so that's been taking up a lot of our time. Other than that, uh, that's really about it. Unless you guys have any questions for me?
What labor law firm do you use?
Who are you? Commissioner Denny Harris. What do you do? Uh, well, we more or less take care of the finances in Saginaw County. No money can get spent, like the sheriff's department, everything goes through the commissioners.
So you're part of the treasury department that's in the county?
Nope, they're totally different. Treasury, like all your tax and everything goes, that's one department, just like the sheriff's department's another department, uh. We just control, like, if they want to spend any money, any power, do anything, they have to stay within the budget.
Are you the drain commission, is that what it is?
No, drain commission, that's Brian Whimling, he's his own entity too. Like the clerk's office, uh, they're all different. So if they want anything, then they have to, you know, spend any excessive money, like your courts, if they need any excessive money, then they have to go through the commissioners to have it approved.
Each district in the county has a commissioner.
I'm sorry, let's say.
Each district in the county has a commissioner.
Like, I take care of District Six, Six, which is the southern part, so I have, uh, St. Charles, Chuffing, Brady, Grant, Maple Grove, Albee. And then Tracy Slidowski actually has part of, uh, St. Charles too. She, uh, starts in Townline Road and then goes to the north.
You overseeing some of the road projects that are being done out here?
That's totally up to the road commission.
Okay.
Yeah. Dan Porter, the director of that.
Money funded is what I was wondering, so.
Yep, they're, they're, again, their own entity, the, again.
Any other announcements, public comment? Spicer Engineer Report, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Austin Alexander Spicer, a few updates for y'all today. First off, sorry for not being here at the last meeting, we thought it was canceled, didn't realize it was postponed, so, uh, missed out on the reschedule, but we're here now with two months worth of updates, so, extra good. TMF grant side of things, we had our bid opening a couple of weeks ago, um, and that was really good, uh, the low bid came in at a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred sixty-four. That was Monchala, MEC Underground Solutions, uh, Hart's got a letter of rec for that to get approved, um, and then the high bidder was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so like, big range of bids. Uh, but a hundred and thirty-one thousand is really low compared to kind of what we were initially estimating. We took prices from the DWOM, um, and kind of assumed that there'd be a little bit of a, of an increase since then, but they actually were cheaper per service, uh, than that initial when we opened bids a few years ago. So I think it's just post-COVID, uh, things are starting to come down, labor's starting to come down, so we're gonna look to see about maybe even adding some additional services, some additional scope within the grant dollar limit, because if we don't spend it, it goes back, kind of thing, so, I try to maximize it the best, add a little bit of additional services to verify, really make sure we're being thorough and finding all the lead and carbonates in the, in the village.
Who was the highest bidder?
The highest bidder, I don't have it.
I sent it, I sent an email with those to you guys last week.
If they're construction, just to let everybody know, it's probably not gonna be local.
Sure. Yeah, Monchala, they are in Michigan, they are in, where is it? I'm trying to remember.
I think they opened an office in Saginaw, but they're metro Detroit.
Yeah.
They have new technology, it's the technology that helps lower the rate, where they literally have these trucks that come in and they just do a puck. Uh, and the other, one of the, the third lowest company has the same truck.
Yep.
They just take this, the concrete out, like a puck, and cover it with, uh, steel, uh, until they're done, put the puck back in, seal it up, done. It'll take them five, ten, fifteen minutes.
Yeah, for addresses where the water services run right through a concrete driveway, instead of having to pull out a whole slab and repay that, you can just, yeah, like, or is it cut out a puck, pull it out, do what you gotta do, place that back, and then they'll use like a patching and align it all up, and it should be mostly level, so we're looking to have them do that, they were able to.
Well, there's a huge difference between the lowest and the highest, that's why I'm going, okay, you got, you got good credentials?
It's equipment, yeah, they, they're the ones that did the four hundred for us the last time.
Right.
And finished early and on time and under budget.
And the, the same thing too, I thought the same thing, but we had three, the three lowest were all kind of in that same tier, one thirty, one forty, one fifty, so when you're seeing three of them all kind of.
You're talking like, I think a ninety thousand dollar difference, though.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty thousand, like almost twice as much between the lowest to the highest, which was definitely a big range, for sure. But Monchala, we've, we've done a lot of work with them, Spicer particularly, they've, we've been opening a ton of these TMF grant projects recently and doing a ton of bids, and so they've, they've filled up their work calendar for the summer, they've probably been a little bit around four or five of their jobs along the Saginaw County kind of area. Um, but we've worked with them in the past and are working with them on other projects, so we recommend them, I think they do a good job.
Do you have a team that like goes after all these grants and that, that submits them to people like Hart and other villages and whatever?
Yeah, I think it's kind of on a, on a client basis, we gotta look at the village, especially look at different clients and see, like, the state announces a big pot of money, like the TMF grant, we think about who would be, make a good applicant, and obviously the village was a, was a great applicant, given everything we found with the DWOM, and so kind of work with, with the community and see what makes sense.
So, on that, Mitch and I used to meet, especially for TMF, he said, he said, there's a pot of money in this, would you wanna go after it? Said, sure, let's go after it, so, uh, that was Mitch's idea, uh, whereas, you know.
You guys submit the grant to him and then he just fills out and submits them, is that how it works?
Yeah, there's a little bit of engineering work and then a little bit of administrative work that goes into it too, so we.
Some, but the, some grants, like the safe routes, we just did the mini grant for ten thousand, so that was just me, then we did the major grant, which was just me at one point two million, and then we get to the engineering stage, and that's when I reach out to Mitch and say, hey, we need engineering for these three sidewalks.
Well, I think, I think a lot of people would like to know how that process works, I mean, I've been asked, you know, how, how does that work? Is Spicer's doing it, I mean, they've been giving you a lot of credit for it, I mean, how does it work? You just dig in about the internet, you submit it to the planning?
I, I submit my email to most state sites that have grants, and you get an email, for instance, I got one today for Michigan Hazard Mitigation Loan Program, so, uh, sign up for emails, like alerts, things like that.
It's likely cutting the loop on what's going on with that and how they're being submitted, who they're being submitted to, so we can keep an eye on it too.
That, that's what I'm here for.
Absolutely. Uh, other projects, so, oh yeah, so TMF, so we've got that, once that's approved, we'll just move forward with the normal sequence of things, pre-construction meeting, do our contract documents, and then depending on how Monchala plans on sequencing things, I'm sure this summer, uh, you know, they'll come out and do what they're planning on, with the three hundred and sixty services, they'll probably be, be out here for about seven or eight weeks, about, about two months, start to finish, going out digging holes, so, it'll be a fun summer. Uh, twenty twenty-five water system improvements for those stretches of water main, moving forward with the, the RD application. Uh, I just had a meeting with the ACEC, American Council Engineering Companies, I think, but we meet with, with the state and different representatives, and so, uh, one thing that's relevant from that is that the RD application, and specifically with St. Charles's application, nothing is getting hit or undermined with as far as the funding and the federal side of things, because that, that is a federally funded grant, or, uh, program.
And that's the grant I just went after, after meeting with Congressman Kildy.
Yep.
I brought it up in a, when I met with him, and he, he said, I've heard of that, what, let's see what I can do, and I think because he was turned out, they gave him, threw him a bone, and he got, I think, four projects, uh, funded. So, that's something I submitted, I wrote letters of recommendation on behalf of the DPW superintendent, on behalf of the fire chief, on my behalf of the superintendent, all to try to show support for the project.
Yeah, so for this next fiscal year, there's still, Congress is still working out how much, who's getting what, but St. Charles and this application that we're working through is still moving along, so we're still working through our different items. We just, uh, submitted plans to Eagle for permitting, once Eagle says that, that the project is permissible, uh, then we'll be able to keep moving forward with that RD application, and we've had conversations with them. Moving along, on, on, uh, track for that one as well. Safe routes to school, we resubmitted the SHPO pre-scoping application because they had some comments, readjusted things on the sidewalk, um.
Very interesting, I just learned that this week, I've met with Spicer three times in the last three days, but, uh, as far as the SHPO, the tribal community has their own records of archaeological dig-ups that they don't share with anybody else. Uh, so, they have twenty-one days to comment, and the first, uh, few days, they didn't have any, any problems with the work, and now they have, uh, some questions about, uh, perhaps, what is it, human remains near the Bad River that they wanna look into first on their record site, so, so like, we're still going through the process, it might hold us up a little bit, but very interesting.
In the meantime, we're still just working on design-related things for the right-of-way application and, and moving there, we'll have more updates as we kind of keep going along. Last one I've got for you, before I turn it over to Mark, on the code updates, is just the Ithaca Road Water Main Extension, uh, it's come up on a couple of meetings. So we, we cleaned up the PEC that we had from a couple of years ago, that estimated cost, and so Hart's got that as well for what it would look like to extend that water main out to the village boundary, uh, and grab those couple of customers.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
For five houses.
Yes.
So, cranking the numbers, let's say we split it seventy-five thousand, village pays four seventy-five thousand, they pay four, five houses over fifteen years, you know, it might be doable. I think you get maybe nine thousand dollars a year in water bills with, uh, outside rates, but something we'll discuss in the future and we'll bring on another agenda night.
Yep, it's about nine hundred feet total of water main, most of that just being normal PVC, but then there's a spot where you'd have to do a directional drill to get under the road.
And they could certainly petition their neighbors, and, and that's probably how it should go about, get, you have to have, what, fifty-one percent of the residents sign off on approval to move forward, so.
So we've got that PEC available, if anybody wants to actually see the, the breakdown of that, but that's the last thing I've got, uh, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Mark. Very quick, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Do we submit bids with these guys, I mean, do you guys submit bids with anybody else, is there any other competition with these guys, you guys just, Spicer exclusively, inclusively, I mean?
So there's a bid out in, Chris Newman did it, and Spicer came in low bid, uh, over the years, um, Spicer is really not contract change order, a lot of people will go low bid, and then once they get ya, they change their contract and say, oh, we need this, or seven thousand for this, or ten thousand for this, the good news is, we've got a great working relationship, uh, and we're, we're funding a lot of what they do with, through grants, so we really.
I'm not saying they do a bad job, I think they do a fantastic job, but I'm just saying, we bid out everything else, trying to save money, why aren't we doing it with them, there's plenty of, of plenty of surveyors or whatever in the, in just the Saginaw County, I mean, I have nothing against them, I'm just saying, trying to keep the, you bid out the construction part of it, why aren't you bidding out the other part of it? You know, there's gotta be other ways we can save money in this village besides just, just running with what we got. I mean, I've never heard a bid from anybody else other than these guys, I, I got a list here, a whole bunch of people, Wade Trem, Rose and Bag, Rock, Apex, there's, there's a bunch of them, right here in Saginaw County, I've never heard anything since I've been here, sitting in this council, have I ever heard of anybody bid out the, the engineering part of this, why?
Again, we, we bid out, they won the bid, we stayed with them, now we're paying them through grants, so it's been a pretty lucrative, great savings for the village.
Yeah, I, I like to see the savings, what I wanna say, because I don't see it, I mean, we, we, they're the only guys that have ever bid on this, they've just been using it exclusive, and I just don't, people are asking why.
I understand.
Why do they use that exclusively? I mean, we got them using them for, for our ordinance and stuff, why isn't that sent out to an accounting firm or a lawyer or something, except for another bid?
For the code that was bid out, uh, for the zoning that was bid out, and they lost to row engineering, so we do, do it on particular items that might not be their specialty, for sure. Um, whereas this is, again, you know, once we started getting grants and funding them through grants and not village taxpayer dollars, that's why, why change that, you wanna use?
I mean, I, I mean, I averaged it out over the last six months that we were in twenty twenty-four, and they averaged twenty-six thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents a month. Over the course of the year, three hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-six cents is what they get off of us, so why isn't it being bid, I'm just looking at this and going.
Did you get that list from Mr. Freak?
Maybe I did, what's enough to you? It's off the website, look at it, look at it, add it up, I can do math, I went to school.
Can you? We can look up the, the engineering, but.
It's right here, you wanna look at it, it's right here.
I, I would just say.
I got it off in your paperwork, right here.
I understand, I mean, I, I don't.
I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, in the grand scheme.
We wanna save more money in this village to do other things?
What was the number for Spicer again, three?
Uh, I did it over six months, uh, July through December, and then averaged it up, and it ended up being a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-six, averaging twenty-six thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. If you do that by twelve, it's, over the year, it's three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, nine hundred and nine, I didn't go the first, first six months, but I did do the last six months.
So, here, here's how I want you to, to kind of look at this, in the grand scheme, in the scope of things, we have seven point four million dollars worth of projects with grants and, uh, bond payments, and so they're getting three hundred and fourteen thousand of seven point four million.
Saying they do a bad job, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, can we do it cheaper? I'm not trying to push these guys out of work or nothing, I'm not trying to.
Well, we're like in the middle of all these jobs right now.
I understand, that's what I'm saying.
So why would we wanna?
Why wasn't there a bid in the first place, is what I'm saying, I've never seen, never seen a bid since I've been in here, from, from any, any other engineering place, why?
Again.
Because we're in the, I don't know, we're in the middle of everything.
Now, I get it, now.
On projects that weren't their specialty, we have.
This is some of the questions that are being asked of me, and I'm going, I don't know, I said, I'll ask.
Why are they asking you?
Great questions.
Why aren't they here asking?
Good to ask, it's.
It's good to ask.
I am here. We are here, I'm gonna ask.
Yeah, you guys are just here to stir trouble, that's bottom line.
No, it's not.
You got, you got, you got nothing better to do.
You wanna bet?
Quit wasting our time.
Let's get back to the agenda.
Quit wasting our time.
Get back to the agenda, I was just getting at, you know, the population in this town, I did some research here, it just, it's declining, every year it's going down, and, uh.
Well, you come here like every three months for a meeting.
You know what, if I could be here more and I, I didn't have nothing better to do, I'd be here at every meeting.
Well, like, you, like, what, if you have other things to do, why are you even here at all?
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just trying to get to the point here.
Don't come here every three months and then try to bring up.
Anyways, the population's going down, the crime rate's going down, I hear we're adding, people are saying, why do we need five police on the force, I mean, there's, there's other things we can do on this.
Crime is going down.
Huh? Crime is going down, true, right here.
That's why we need those people there.
Oh, 'cause it's going down, we need more cops?
Keeping.
Listen, I'm just saying, I'm all for public safety, but I'm just saying, you talk wages, pensions, you're talking, you know, there's other things in there. You know, I'm just saying, is it actually needed? This says, we don't need it, we don't need the extra police officer in this town, it really does. I mean, the population's going up, we have no Miller School, we've got, we've got no middle school, we've got Patterson, what's, what's gonna happen next, is Patterson gonna be moved to the St. Charles schools? They got a sign out here saying, hey, come to Hemlock Schools, there's nothing here for you guys, our population is going down, but our, our tax rates are going up, that makes no sense, twenty percent of the people in this town are in poverty. Minimum rate for somebody's income.
Are you good?
Is right around thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Please proceed.
All right, so, Austin pretty much covered all the reports, I just wanted to talk about the ordinance for the planning commission. Um, at this point, we've gone through all the chapters, gotten comments with the planning commission, um, you know, in all those chapters, right now, we're basically putting all that information together. I've gotta do a little bit of research on some of the questions that the, the planning commission had, get that stuff basically brought back into a draft update, and then when we get to that, I'll be at the following meeting, once we're there, to go over with the planning commission again. They don't plan to be at the March meeting, just because we're not quite to a point to be productive, so, we're just gonna take that meeting off, but other than that, you know, we're gonna keep pursuing that, and I would think, you know, I think the project was slated to continue to go, you know, just to get it wrapped up sometime this year, so that's the plan. And I think that will still, once we get all the updates in, it'll still take a few months, because we're gonna wanna probably go through it, you know, or have everyone re-review it before we discuss it at a meeting again, so. Not a lot to report on it right now. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council minutes approval for February nineteenth and February twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, council minutes for February nineteenth and February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to accept the village council minutes of the special meeting, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
All support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Commission Committee Reports, Planning Commission, February twentieth, twenty twenty-five. I'll make a motion to approve the St. Charles Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of February twenty, twenty twenty-five.
All support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item B, Parks and Recreation Committee, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to accept the Park and Recreation Meeting Minutes for February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item C, Downtown Development Authority for March seventh, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to accept the Downtown Development Authority Minutes for Friday, March seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
You know, I was trying to make the meeting that Friday, but I didn't make it back in time, something happened, but, uh, I think there's a lot that can be done, I think I'm gonna try to get to the next meeting. We got Easter egg hunt here, we got drone show at Christmas, I mean, there's a lot of little things that car shows that, that all the communities do around here. Greenland's got a Walley Fest, Frankl's got Smoke Fest, Hemlock's got Solid Fest, Monchala's got Blueberry Fest, we're looking to do something in this town, it brings a big event here, I mean, other than, the Saints have the snowmobile thing, but that's really not in the village, I mean, and that hinges on the weather, you know, so I mean, I think we really need to, to look at something, to do something in this town.
So we have, uh, a first annual bass fishing tournament coming up, uh, I think that's May thirty-first, we have the Easter egg hunt, April twelfth. We have STC Home Down, Hometown Days, which expects four hundred to eight hundred people in September, we have Rebel Magnolia coming back, which they expect eighteen hundred people in the village that day. So there are events, we have travel baseball coming, we have three signed-up softball that'll bring probably two thousand people, uh, that, every day that weekend, or three weekends, so, um, things are happening here, people are coming here.
I'd just say a bigger event, like, we have something that's concrete that's.
I think that's what they wanna see out of Hometown Days.
We used to have Coal Miner Fest, and then we had Sportsman, and things got a little out of hand, things happen, yeah, you know, you know what I'm talking about. I think, I think we need to bring something like that back, I've got a couple ideas, but I don't know.
And here, and here's where the crux of the issue is, and what we've seen through some of these festivals, is a lot of people have ideas, but when it comes to the day of, there's zero volunteers.
I, I disagree with that, I think there will be volunteers.
I mean, that's always the whole, I mean, Kathy tried to start a new festival last year, how many volunteers did you end up with?
Neil's talking about not wanting to do this little thing this year, because he's the one that does anything, because nobody else wants to help him.
I mean, so there, therein lies the issue, you talk about.
I think there's other ways, you know, I mean, talk to the downtown development.
Organization ran the festival, it wasn't just a.
Yeah.
Group of volunteers, I guess they're volunteers, but it was an organization.
Right.
Well, can you explain to these guys why you shot down the snow angel thing, which helps some of the, the handicap people and some of the elderly in this town, I mean, you, I, you sent out an email saying, hey, this is a good idea, and I'm going, wow, he's actually gonna run with this, so I, I, I gave you some money to get it off the ground, I bought some shovels, going, hey, you know what? Because I tried to do it in my neighborhood, and there's a big need for some of the elderly and the handicapped, that can't do it, that cannot do it, and you pretty much told me, screw off, start a Facebook page.
That's a good start, that's, it's a volunteer item, it's not a local government issue.
Well, you have people mowing lawns, don't you, and, and pulling weeds, can't you do something along that same way, you could help get it off the ground.
For village parks, for village grounds, not, not for.
You understand what I'm saying, there is a huge need for that, I'm not saying the people are just too lazy to shovel the driveways, there's people that can't do it, and it's a safety thing, it is.
We need to behave, we don't, we get audited every year, we, we can't have money flowing in for things that are.
Well, you could've just started something else, you could, could help get it off the ground, that's why I was trying to talk to the DDA or whatever, to, to help get this going.
The St. Charles ambassadors, the kids that said they wanted to help, they wanted shovels, they wanted.
We got it, we got the money to get off the ground, to pay them, do whatever.
And I let them know, and that's who reached out.
So these kids actually need hours of service to graduate, I mean, it's like.
And I said, why don't you reach out to, to Matt Wiki and ask to see if the NHS needs one of the house, because they need hours, they have to sign off on it, that's the first place to start.
Listen, there is a need for it, is all I'm saying, and I'm not just saying because people are retired and lazy and don't wanna shovel their driveways, that's not what I'm saying, people that are physically unable to do it. I try to get them going, it just seems like every time I try to do something, you shoot me down, and I think it's wrong.
Go a different route, I think, maybe through the school, maybe that would, you know.
Start it on your own Facebook page, I bet.
I'm not a big Facebook guy, yeah, I get on there once in a while, whatever, I'm not sitting on my phone all day, I drive and rock and whatever, and so I don't have the time, I honestly do not have the time, I'm not at the meeting like I should be.
Matt Wiki at the school would be happy to help, I believe, um.
What'd you say?
Matt Wiki.
Matt Wiki.
He's in charge of the Indian Chef, the National Honor Society.
No, who's the, uh, what's her face, who, that owned the?
You're talking about Kelly Cornford?
Kelly Cornford, I still.
She's the finance, she'll get you in touch with Mr. Wiki, who, who'd be happy to help.
Well, I still wanna go through the school, I'm just saying, there should be other volunteers, you're saying there's no volunteers, there's people that'll volunteer to do it, and they can actually make some money doing it, and then maybe it'll branch out into helping build their lawns in the summer and whatever, and maybe give, give them some structure, and give them some work ethic, you know, and it.
I think it should cheer that, Paul.
It's a great idea, but it's, it's taken off in other communities as a volunteer effort, not sponsored by the local government.
NHS would be good, and.
I think Matt Wiki would be a great place, and I'd, I'd be happy to send him a message, again.
Um, your update on the vacant buildings, they were the same, correct?
Uh, vacant building, so, we spoke twice in the last couple of weeks, first time I spoke with him, he wanted to do something this summer. Um, follow-up, he came back two days later, picked up three facade grant applications to work on, he purchased Mr. Jenderski's mother's apartment, so he wants to fix up that side, and the two that aren't, um, with, with roofs on the other side, so, he also picked up an engineer, uh, electrical permit and a building permit, I think he's gonna demo the one with no roof, uh, and rebuild completely. Uh, but with him picking up the applications last week, I think we're gonna move before summer, I told him to try to get it in, uh, for the April meeting, so.
Talking about vacant buildings, East North Street, Rashon X, well, by King Title, there's a house down there, they got graffiti on it, overgrown, like you don't know, probably a.
You talking about the one that goes to the dead end, not that, it's, it's not ours.
The creek down there.
That's in the township.
We've been in, we looked in.
It's not in the, not in the village?
It's not in the village.
Let me get back to our agenda.
We ain't, no communicate, no communications? Paying the claims.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, fifty-one cents for the month of February.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I, I would just point out at the bottom, so for instance, uh, let me get to the bottom of page four, where it says Spicer Engineering Company TMF grant, twenty-five thousand. A lot of, a lot of these funds are reimbursable through the state for some of the things that they do for us, so it's not completely, uh, village dollars.
Our new business, can I get a motion to close the regular meeting?
Motion to close our meeting.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting's closed. Some new business.
I'm gonna make a motion to open up truth and taxation hearing. Now we gotta open the hearing.
I make a motion to open the truth and taxation hearing.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Truth and taxation public hearing for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Attached as a permanent record and by references hereby adopted the document twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget, which includes a twelve point eight zero two nine village, operating village, and a two point one nine seven one village street fund village for a total of fifteen mills. Any questions?
Is there a, a question to the commi-, um, to the, to the audience?
Yes, sir.
Why aren't you competitive? That fifteen mills does not make us competitive. Uh, there was an email sent out to some of you people on the council, come up with an answer. People aren't gonna move to Saint Charles if, uh, you know, Swan Creek Township has a lower tax rate. Bottom line, competition, economics, one oh one.
So, the village tax rate has been the same for over thirty-eight years. The only change was the two point one nine seven one mills. That was for the local, uh, road village from twenty sixteen to twenty thirty-five that falls off in twenty thirty-six, which converts it back to twelve point eight oh two nine, which it was in nineteen eighty-seven.
And for we, what?
It's at fifteen, which is our total. Uh, so you pay fifteen mills one time. So, these communities that, like, for instance, Birch Run was men- mentioned, they have eight, eight, eight mills. What's eight mills times two? Is sixteen more than fifteen? So, we, we're, we're competitive. You know, the question I would ask is, uh, you pay us once and you get police, roads, water, sewer. You paid a township twice. What services are they providing?
I'm sure you've heard this before. For people get taxed, they feel like they've been being taxed, taxed twice because it's not just village, it's township taxes.
Correct.
So.
Yep, and proposed.
Should we make it bigger so it's all combined?
So, this is a huge issue that, you know, you can look at Florida right now, talking about removing the, uh, property taxes. Michigan, uh, House has talked about it. Uh, obviously, there'd be other fees and services that go into this. Proposably, it kicked this off in nineteen ninety-four, which drained local governments to fund schools. And it changed everything. So, you're seeing like a, a fifty percent cut, let's just say, to local government and backfilled the schools. So, then Snyder changed everything in eleven. Uh, he cut local government revenue sharing by thirty-three percent, which we have not seen recovered. So, we're, everybody's doing more with less. You know, the shared sacrifice that he talked about, I was downstairs when he was giving the speech. I, I, I could probably recite it. Uh, so, our growth as far as local government funding has been one point five percent since two thousand and one.
What's big growth?
Uh, the, how much revenue share do we get additionally? So, that's not even covering inflation.
This barely, we have a, a general, a dollar store and a, a little restaurant. I mean, other than that, when's the last time a house was built here?
Right, you land for that. Uh, so, we, our revenue share has been one point five percent for thirty years, almost, and inflation's been five, seven, six, three. Uh, for instance, our revenue sharing has actually cut this year. Uh, one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars less than last year. The projections are it'll go up a whole whopping two point six percent next year. But again, with inflation being, what is it, three point one percent on your property taxes this year? We're, we're, we're not keeping up with what we're getting from, from Lansing. That's why we have to do a lot of things through grants. That's why TMF is important. That's why Safe Routs is important. That's why the congressional mil- a million dollars is important. That's why the DWM was important. That's why the, even, even to plant trees, you know, seven thousand dollars for trees in one year is important. That's all funds that we don't have to pay out of our village taxpayer dollars.
I don't think people would do that, but yeah, I'm glad we're getting them. But I think there's other ways to, to create revenue. Like, we've got properties that we pay on every year, a lot. I mean, what about releasing some of the property?
We don't, villages don't pay taxes.
I'm just saying, we could've released some of these properties, get some businesses in there, so we can collect some of that revenue.
That's a good idea.
There's other ways. Uh, look at Franklmoof. Look at, uh, Freeland. Look at, uh, Thomas Township. Look at Hemlock. You know, there's a, a program in each one of those communities where they have private sector development. People go out and sell that community. Why did Thomas Township get, uh, Saginaw control? Because someone promoted it. That's a company that came from Saginaw, came out to Thomas Township. Where were we? Why didn't we, uh, more aggressively pursue mosquito-controlled buildings or the animal-controlled buildings?
We did pursue animal control pretty hard.
Well, we didn't get it. Obviously, it wasn't hard enough.
Oh, hey, calm down.
I had Robert Bellman in my office.
I wanna make sure you hear, pal.
But, oh, you're just fine.
When you talk to CEOs of these companies, these multimillionaires who run these companies, what they do say that our disadvantage is our location. You're not on seventy-five. We're not close enough to twenty-three for them, and that's why the boatwork sits where it is, and that's why Hemlock Semiconductor is using it. Uh, so, my hope is that with their billion-dollar investment over there, that we can get a piece of that. I think you'll see in the next few months, you'll see people branching out from there and, and at least opening here. I'm not sure they're gonna stay here, but they will be using our buildings.
The village of Saint Charles is, it shows you right on. You're basically two square miles. That's it, all we got. So, I mean, we need to utilize the, the property that we have to the best of our advantage. And when people do move to places, what's the first thing you look at when you move someplace?
Crime.
Crime?
Parks.
Property taxes.
Taxes, boom.
Your neighbor, your neighbors.
Young, young couples look for parks and the safety, public safety. And we're very competitive, uh, again. You know, you have one tax to us.
Let me add something else. You talk about being competitive. My neighbors don't think so. And we're, we're talking about detachment. And that's a solution. Get away from all this drama here, but we're not getting our money, we're not getting our money's worth out of the, uh, village taxes.
You only got one neighbor that talks to you down that street.
Oh, bullshit.
That's, alright, alright. Watch your language, sir.
Tell the truth, pal.
I, I will say the process for that goes through the county. If that is something he will open into, he can discuss with Mr. Harris after the meeting.
It's a referendum.
I sent you the information on how to do it, sir.
There's others, there are other ways.
Not for populations of our size.
Well, hopefully we can.
Under our law, village act.
Hopefully, they can bring the population back, add some more business, and get some houses, go and get some people back in our community, get people back in our schools because it's going the wrong way.
I'd like to ask those of you who are complaining about it, what have you done to try and help get businesses or local people in here? Have you tried anything yourself?
Yeah, I, I volunteered, uh, with Hardwood to see if we could get the, uh, the golf course signed down. No one was interested. We had all kinds of obstacles. There's other things I suggested, and it doesn't, doesn't seem like I get community, uh, support, so I just gave up. Um, I'll be an advocate for my neighborhood, and I think I'm doing that pretty well, and I'll continue doing that pretty well. If you want, uh, to give me your email, um, you'll be seeing some emails, uh, giving you a critique of this meeting, uh, Sunday night at eight o'clock.
Uh, so, I will add about the sign. Uh, the DDA did reach out to the owner of that property to try to purchase the property and remove the sign, and then partner with the school to add a new electric sign for both parties, but, uh, the owner is not giving up the property. Um, it was a fair value, fair market offer. Uh, they were willing to pay quite a bit of money to try to get rid of the eyesore. But my understanding is the township is hosting, uh, some meetings with the owner, uh, who is looking to reopen and maybe do some things on, uh, that property.
Well, you, Kathy, what'd you donate to this, this community?
I haven't donated a lot to this community in a year.
Can you throw in a little?
Attacked the budget.
This is, this is totally off the agenda.
Why'd you ask it?
Because he's talking about it.
I'm not paid to be on your council. Put me on the council, and I'll get things done.
It's yourself elected, honey. Let's go, let's continue. This is getting ridiculous.
You need to close that.
No.
Well, let's get a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the, uh, taxation public hearing.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? You got another motion?
I'll make a motion to reopen the regular meeting. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Regular meeting opened. Item B, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, budget amendment, resolution twenty-five dash five.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash five to amend the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget. Support.
Roll call vote?
No.
Jamie Kendall?
Uh, yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain?
Yes.
Jennifer Ross or Nesbit?
I would just note that you'll see the actual numbers and property tax value coming into the village is about forty-three thousand dollars less than what we budgeted because people have not paid their taxes. So, we have fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars in unpaid property taxes.
How are you gonna collect that?
The county, the delinquent tax fund.
Okay, good luck.
That's how it works. It's gotta get it.
Are, how many houses is that, do you know?
Uh, we sent out letters today letting them know the pay, we're gonna throw down the next year's taxes. It was probably, I'm trying to think. You know, one house had like fifty bucks unpaid. That's not a big deal, but there's a lot with a few thousand dollars.
Item C, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget approval, resolution twenty-five dash six.
In front of you have the budget. We held, held our workshop. Obviously, you see property taxes statewide went up three point one percent due to inflation. Uh, the last couple of years, it's been the maximum five point five allotted by the state. And you'll see the numbers changed a little bit due to the fact that the, the federal government is requiring a twenty-five percent match for the million dollars. That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we added in undes- undesigned fund balance in the general fund. Yeah, yeah. So, the, the general fund, typically in the village for the last thirty, forty years, has been about a million dollars. This is one point four million, seventy-six thousand, right? So, three hundred and fifty thousand of that is going right to the bond payment for the five point two million dollar water, water project. And two hundred and fifty thousand of that is going towards our million-dollar match. So, that's why that number seems high. It'll be back down to a mill or one point two probably because of our bond payment for the next twenty years. And the final number is five point, five million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. That is about two point two million dollars higher than I've ever wanted it to be. We like to stay around three point three million. But, when you take into effect, that's a million dollars for congressional appropriation for phase two. That's two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for phase one. That's twenty thousand for Fulton and Hosmer. That's five hundred and ninety-seven thousand for TMF grant, uh, lead line, sub, lead service line. There's your two point two makeup. Subtract that, you're down to your three point three range where we normally are, and have stayed consistent from eighteen, nineteen, so. I expect it to be back down. Next year, you're gonna see nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in Safe Routs' school grant, so it's gonna be up again. We'll have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, in bond payments for the phase one. Uh, but phase two will be done, and we won't have to do anything with that, so. Uh, it's higher than normal, but that's because of grants and projects being done.
I think it's just a shame that years passed, they didn't try to fix a little bit of it at a time. Build some money up, fix a little bit, save some money up, but, and now all of a sudden, we're getting hit, getting it thrown all in our lap all at once, and that's a lot of money. I mean, these people don't have the money to be raising taxes or anything in this town.
The thing we're making grants.
It's a lot done. It's a lot. I think if they did a little bit at a time, it, it would've went over a little smoother.
I would note that, you know, we, we are seeing a decrease in funding from the state. As I said, point five percent in, decrease. It was supposed to be a point five percent increase. Uh, as of December, at the governor's, uh, large consensus meeting, we went down. But next year's projections, I expect our constitutional revenue sharing to be two hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. They've already changed the public safety additional dollars that we received, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, to a three formula, which, uh, takes into effect taxable value, yield, and weighted population. So, our revenue sharing standard will be forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and our three formula, formula, state funding will be four thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars, or two point six percent increase. And it seems that statewide, you're gonna see two point six percent increase from the state, uh, or six thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars more. Uh, I will say that, uh, MMWA collection, your carts for recycling and garbage is gonna go up to sixteen dollars and, sixteen dollars and nineteen cents a month. So, that's on your taxes. It'll be a hundred and ninety-four dollars, twenty-four cents, and in twenty-six, that should be two oh one fifty-six, or sixteen dollars and eighty cents a month. As you pointed out, we made the changes suggested by council. Most of the funds are all being spent in the water fund. Uh, this does include a, a fair wage for all of our employees, uh, based on the twenty twenty-four Mid-Michigan, uh, municipal league's wage and salary survey, so. I think employees will be extremely happy. Now, we're competitive not only in wages, but in fringe benefits as well. And as we're interviewing employees for, to fill, uh, for Skylark's position, you know, that's one of the things, advantages we have over other communities, so.
I'd say we still need to look the cover a little bit off the budget.
We need a motion to approve the resolution twenty-five dash six.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash six.
All support.
Roll call vote?
Paul Jenderski?
No.
Jamie Kendall?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain?
Yeah.
Jennifer Ross or Nesbit?
Item D, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one capital improvement plan updated.
Here is a six-year plan for the village on how to spend their money wisely. It is a guidebook. It is not set in stone. This is how you move forward responsibly, so that no, no purchases shock anyone, so that you can say this has been planned for five years. It's, it's fair. It. It's it's fair. It, I met with Superintendent Thurston to go over his, his department. I went, met with Chief Oliver to go over what their needs are. And uh this is what we came up with. It also includes money for upgrades to technology at the, this office. Our computers are pretty outdated. Uh so we'll start with the police office where we need them more for uploading and downloading some of their files. Uh with years to come, we'll add fixing the treasurers and the clerks and eventually mine. This includes all the grants, so you can see exactly what's going on. It includes past, so that you can see what the ARPA funds were in, you know, nine, nine thousand and two thousand and one. I mean, not a ton of money is there, but it, this is an ambitious goal. Uh I think it's, on average, one point one million dollars a year in spending, uh some with, mostly because of the grants. Uh as you'll see on page, uh let's see, we'll go down to page eleven. You got phase one, phase two, so phase one water payments, three hundred and three thousand, three hundred and one thousand, three hundred thousand, three hundred and three thousand, three hundred thousand, three hundred and three thousand. These are the big payments. These are what are raising our, our budget numbers. Um that's why, again, congressional budget of a million dollars for a million dollars, for a million this year is huge. Um this includes new equipment for DPW as far as a flood pump, but you know, a big dump. Helps with the facade grant. DDA does have some funding here for banners, signs, parks, marketing, downtown infrastructure. They'll be spending seventy-six thousand, I believe, on a new asphalt for downtown in the next couple of months. Uh you can see in the sewer fund, we're really looking to improve our sewers, and this is where you saved. We haven't spent a ton of money out of that fund, so I'm hoping by the end of this fiscal year, we have enough money to do these without having to raise rates. That's the point of saving, doing more with less, so. Uh all three pumps, but I think the total was one point three million, and we should be able, we should have that in our bank account to do so.
I see you cut a lot of the drainage out. We had that little debacle with McPhail down there, and the drainage was cut. Ah, and now on this page, I was looking at earlier, it was like from twenty-five to ten thousand. I mean, people were complaining that we were trying to-
And as I mentioned at that, that workshop, that Bart and I discussed a few ideas that every spring and every fall, we're gonna look at a couple of areas of the village to do, to work on the drainage.
It doesn't never get mentioned. Nobody ever says anything about the drainage. The root balls that are backing it up, that are heaving our, our roads and sidewalks and flooding people's houses. I mean, nobody ever, nobody ever mentions that. The one time with McPhail was the only time I've ever heard anybody mention it.
Yeah, and so we get act fifty-one dollars to do, to work on projects just like that, so. Not a big deal. It's something DPW is, is committed to, and and I think it's a great idea to, to, you know, prevent future issues.
Did you ever get down there, like, look down there to see if the difference clears? Is mud packing it up before somebody complains? I know they got jet systems that run through some of them. I did it at my mom. I don't think that would through the village here.
It was brought up and now, where can I get in there now?
It's gonna happen. They're just waiting on weather. Hopefully we didn't get floods in there.
Well, they got through, they did get through that spot. We have to shake it up and patch it, that's where they ended up getting it.
How many others thought they died at that, that hole?
We have an agreement set up where for eight hours, there's a camera and we're gonna do that whole section.
Do you need to do anything else, or are you just updating? Nope, just trying to, uh the people that weren't here at the workshop, just wanted to kind of give a brief overview.
Item E, resolution twenty-five dash seven.
We're getting close to submitting our USDA RD to receive our million dollars. Like I said earlier to you, there were, there was a federal freeze on the money for a day, uh but enough lobbyists in DC got to the president's administration and he released the funds. Um that was Steve Carey from Potomac, uh some services group, um and he ensured us that our funds are there. We do have to go through the process. We do have to find the, follow the federal laws and rules to receive the dollars, but uh it is all guaranteed, so. And again, twenty, phase two of this project was supposed to start in twenty twenty-eight, and because of this, we're starting in twenty twenty-five. Three years early with no taxpayer dollars, other than the twenty-five percent match, so I won't say no, but this, these dollars are coming from our fund balance or savings. So the point of that is I need a resolution so I can sign off on, on the document. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five seven.
Support. Roll call?
Yes. Paul Jenderski?
No.
Jamie Kendall?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain?
Yes.
Jennifer Ross or Nesbit?
Yes.
Did you need us to have proof of our CIP?
I would, I would love that. It was recommended by the signing submission. For you.
Just ask that question in two minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the CIP plan from twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six to fiscal year twenty thirty, thirty-one.
Support.
Support.
Roll call on that?
Paul Jenderski?
Yeah.
Jamie Kendall?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain?
Yes.
Jennifer Ross or Nesbit?
Yes.
Department reports, DPW.
Uh that's most of the water. We pumped three million, five hundred and ninety-four gallons. Uh Scott and Tyler got all the meter reading done. Helped both of them with re-reads. We checked the meters at Arbor Glen. We've been having a problem reading them. We're trying to find a reader that'll work. We haven't been successfully, but we're getting there. Uh changed the pressure transducer on the tower, got it back online, got communication issue resolved between us and the city. We weren't jiving. We had to get together and reset some stuff. Every time our water kicked, our tower kicked on, we had an alarm. So it was calling us. We were going out to check the alarm. By the time we got there, it wasn't an alarm anymore. So it was just the way everything was set up. Got that straightened out. And talked to residents on Oak Street about a leak.
Ears ringing?
This mic is that. Yeah, there's a mic going. There we go. Sewer, last month pumped four million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons. Kind of seen Energy Industries was here to install our new sewer pump. Fixed toilets of the Goodrich building, completed our weekly checks on the sewer lift stations. In the parks, we kept the roads and the trails clean of snow, finished painting and returning trash cans back to the park. Started on painting tables and putting, and put together a new bench and took that down to the park. Uh equipment, Scott has been patching and welding the mower deck for the John Deere. Tyler's been changing the blades on the equipment, the dump trucks. Uh tried to keep everything as clean as we could, and we had to get a new mirror for the dump truck. And streets, pretty much the same, kept them clean of snow and ice. Uh we tried to keep up with the patching as best we could, hard snow as needed, cleaned catch basins so water could get off the roads and get all the rain. That's all I got for you.
Question?
Yep.
I asked him a while ago, when that tree branch was hanging down at the park. About the road, we, did you guys ever go down and get the cones and the barricades?
We had to pick them up.
Well, 'cause it was down there for like a month, and I looked across my mom today, something orange over there, and I got the binoculars out, and it's a barricade. It's on the other side of the river down there. It's orange and it's a barricade of some kind.
Bipod or barricade?
It's half in the water. It's half on the other side of the Shonik side over there. I have no idea. That's what I'm thinking. I was some old crapper just threw it in the water over there.
They found a dollar barricade from somewhere else there, 'cause that wasn't down there. We just have one little bipods.
Yeah, the ice is grim. We gotta go get it and bring it up there, but yeah. It's in the river.
Is it on the other side?
On the other side.
Okay.
Back of downies.
We can check it out.
You good? Chief Oliver?
Right straight across?
Pardon?
Is it right straight across from the house?
No, it's down past Beaver Street.
Okay.
Just, you see half the stick. I hope, maybe it floated away. I don't.
All right, look at the schedule from February. Once again, we had at least one shift covered for every day, so we didn't have any days and we did not have anybody on, on duty, so we're trying to keep that as much as we can. We had a hundred and five self-initiated contacts or um property checks that we did. And fifty-three total reports that we took throughout the, throughout the month of February, which in a twenty-eight day period is quite a lot for a, a town of our size, but reports are in uptick, it's because we're having more coverage hours, like I said last time. I mean, the, the numbers are showing that we're continually having more reports taken, but it's because we're on duty to take our own calls. We're not relying on the county or the state to do it, which sometimes they might take twenty to, twenty minutes to an hour to get to, so. Um nothing really noteworthy in terms of calls that, the second one on the first page, it looks bad, but it's, it's um a residence where the lady went into the hospital for several months, and the neighbor took it upon herself, thankfully, to call the animal patrol to go in and get her animals out of the house, and she wanted her charged with that charge because she entered without her permission, but in terms of saving the animals, they, we did not go with that, but it's titled that way because that's what her complaint was, so. Um couple of frauds, uh which is typical. We get a, get them a few each year. There's this fan that comes every once in a while, and it's internet, and somebody got their identity stolen because they clicked on the wrong link and got their banking information, and a couple of them are from uh uh the same phone scams, you know, you're so-and-so, need some help, here's, here's this number, get a, get a car, go do this, you know, so. We are working on, um I did make a post on our Facebook page about this thing called IC three, and then we're working with the FBI to um get some flyers um regarding that, that website, which helps people with these scams to put into like community centers or the local churches, so the people that don't normally, the elderly, they don't know, really take it on Facebook, has access to this information as well, so we're just working on a way to get out to everybody in the community. So they're aware of the scams that are going on, and he's, um to the most part, he can actually come in, and if we wanna have something at a community center, he will do a um a half hour, forty-five minute lecture on these things for some of these people who are at the age that might get scammed, or he's willing to come and do that. It's all at the FBI's cost, it's no cost to us, so. I put an email out to um, well, it was in, actually in the post that I made on Facebook, asking if anybody would, would like to host this, um because I would assume it'd be quite a few people that might wanna go to it, so. Nobody's responded, yeah, but I'm waiting to get the flyers back first before I make contact with them about having the meeting and everything, so. Um that's in the works. Um we did start the interview process for the, the open position that we have on night shift. We had our first interview today. We have three more by the end of the week. I got four applications. Um since then, two of them have prior experience. One would be a full sponsorship, and the other one would be, I think, a partial. Um with his, he got injured the final couple of weeks of his, of his academy and couldn't make the final test, so. I had to do some digging if, if we were to go there, with him, as if we would have to sponsor through the whole academy again, or he's got to do the final part. I don't know, we'd have to check on that, but that would just be based on if we select that person or not, but. Uh the couple candidates that have experience are, come with a lot of experience, so it's, it's gonna be, gonna be a tough decision based on what we feel is best.
Back to the days, we couldn't get anyone to apply. Now we got four quality candidates.
Yeah, that's, not mad about it. So we have more than just one to choose from this time. Um I think that's about all. We had to take the new hybrid back into the dealership. The, the uh, the left headlight has moisture in it again for the second time, so they're replacing it again. So well, hopefully this second one will be fine. It's a warranty fix, so it's still a cost for the, for our vehicle for a couple of days, but. Nothing we can handle.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
What are we gonna do with Michelle, with uh schools on? I mean, did that, that, does that free up?
Same thing we did last year.
Say, we just got thrown a port, we're gonna have an extra person though, right?
She takes a midday shift.
People gonna take vacation? I mean, is it gonna cost?
I'll, I'll explain it to you. Hold on. Same thing we did last year. She takes a midday shift, so it, it crosses over the NMI shift and the beginning of the night shift. Um and then on weekends that we would normally fill with a part-time job, she takes those shifts every other weekend. So it's the same thing we did last year with it.
Okay, well, try, try to make me feel comfortable with the, with the, another officer being on duty. Have you compared this with another small town that's compared about our population? How many, how many people are on the force there? Have you did that?
Yeah, we're low.
We're low?
Yeah, look at Richland Township. They have twenty-four hour coverage.
Richland Township's got low people in our population than we got.
Chesting has, Chesting had twenty-four hour coverage until they lost their chief and two of their officers, we picked up one of them.
And we always, we always had the, the sheriff department on duty. They're usually up, sitting up to the school or right around.
They don't, that car does move half the time.
Sure, Chesting a lot, and that, I see him here all the time.
Chesting has a, Chesting has a square resource officer that, that's did it out through the county, that's why that officer's out there.
I'm just saying, you just try to make the people feel comfortable with it. Let's, let's, let's put something on paper, show us apple to apple here. Okay, we've got a population over here of twenty-one hundred. We've got nineteen. It's comparable. They've got five people, six people on the force, and it works without, so show us, show us what's, what's gonna help us out besides digging into our pockets.
They don't wanna, it's not though. The budget's there. It's the money that's been there for the last two, three times. We've had somebody, we've been paying for it.
We, we can use that money somewhere else?
If that force spots, the last two people here didn't work out, so it's already been paid for the last year. Nothing's changed. It's just we haven't had it filled consistently.
I'm just saying with the population going down, the crime rate going down, I don't think it just-
The crime rate's going down because we have more officers on the force around here.
That's been going down. I've got the paperwork right there. You go, I'll give you one on my way. Oh, it's crime rates been dropping for years.
Any other questions?
After.
Thank you, chief.
Yep.
Mr. Coldfoot!
All right, for the Mark, um after February, we did not have any permits pulled. Uh one came in. Did handle five complaints, uh one on Main Street. Has been renoticed. Nothing else has happened there. It has problems with dumpsters on South Side and all. Those are being taken care of. Uh had a couple that, um I wrote is no cause for action. One of them, I actually revisited. That would be uh three twenty-seventh Flint. And I am gonna write that one up under building maintenance uh for the siding. Uh because it required to have weather resistant, and it's OSB, which is not designed to be long term in the elements, so. Uh there is a notice that went out. And then six thirty-two Flint, that one has uh been restarted. So uh sent out certified mail to both of those, got return receipts on both of them, so they have been notified. And um I understand Harv was paid, paid a visit by, by one of the two, so. That's all I have.
What about the dumpster up there? I mean, we actually had issues because my mom had a dumpster next to them there. The dumpsters up behind the hardware and that? I see you had it on there from the overflow. There's a lot of people from town that throw stuff in there. I mean, we had cameras, we had locks on it, and, and-
One of them's on the sidewalk. It can't be out there.
I, I get it. I'm just saying, but the, the thing is, with Mark's was different. We had waste management come and pick it up, and they pick it up once a week. Mark's is not like that, regardless. His is on call. He calls and they come get it. So that's on Mark, but I'm just saying.
He hasn't paid his bill.
And I'm sure it ticks him off that people are dumping in there.
Yeah, he hasn't paid his bill in uh over four months, so.
Oh, really?
And so I called them and asked them to come get it, and they said not until it's paid. So we're in a little, we're in a little feud right now to try to coerce him to move, and we're gonna move it ourselves, just off the sidewalk, but we're trying to get it out of here as well.
The other thing is they should be locked.
What the thing is?
Only the people that have access to them will be able to put stuff in them.
Well, the only other thing, 'cause I had asked Harv before, you know, where there's, there's other dumpsters right there in that parking lot, the, the whatever. Lot, ride share thing right there. I don't think people really know that you can throw stuff in there. I mean, you're from the village. We don't have people coming from out of town throwing garbage in there or whatever. But some of the town people go, I didn't even know we could throw stuff in there.
There did I, too, you told me.
I'm just saying, so I mean, can we throw some of that in there and lock that other dumpster up so, so it doesn't happen again?
Such a property owner, I'm not involved.
I think that, that's a village right away there. Isn't it part of the street, correct?
It is. The uh, the street is, actually that whole parking area, those gondolas are on our property, and they were never given permission to be put there. So part of the agreement to allow them to keep them there is that they, property owners, would keep them clean. And the village cannot tell whose garbage is where. I, you know, you can tell me one owner says this, and the other owner can tell me that owner says that. We have no way of telling. So as a village, we have to move forward with making sure it gets cleaned up, and if that means we have to remove them and not let them be brought back because they're littering on our property.
What would be the other r- resolution? I mean, you got people in apartments and the, the hardware there. You gonna put, put little cans out there for them?
And that's why we agreed to allow them to stay there as long as the property owners kept them clean.
Makes sense.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Public comment?
I guess I'm, I'm looking to say something. I wanna thank you for thinking I'm an agitator to start with, because if you think that, 'cause I come here and ask, want, get things done, and agree with Paul that I'm a troublemaker, then you got the wrong answer. And agree with Paul that I'm a troublemaker, then you got the wrong attitude. I'm directing that right at you, cause you yelled at me for no reason.
I knew I was talking to just you.
You was staring right at me.
You got a red hat on. You stick it out.
Uh, thank you. And I wanna mention something else. I had to agree with Mr. Jenderski over there about Spicer getting all these bids. Is somebody getting a kickback on this? Because every one of you people up here had frowns on your face when he talked. Acting like our Democratic congresspeople in the United States Senate and Congress. You people act like he shouldn't be asking for something, to get something done and get it cheaper. No, let's let it all go, right? Ain't that what we think? Huh? Every one of you.
I'm not a Democrat.
You act like one, no. You act just like our congresspeople.
Do I?
Yes, sitting there with a frown on your face while he was talking. You should see the.
Because he comes here maybe once every three months.
Well, is it wrong to ask questions? Is it wrong to ask questions?
Why doesn't he come to every meeting if he?
Well, if he's in Texas, how's he gonna get here?
You gonna fly me back? I'd be more than happy to take your, your money to fly me back here to sit in a meeting for an hour or two.
I really. As soon as you all hate.
I was in here before I got my business. So stick it.
Don't you think that we should save money in this town? I agree.
We do.
I think we should. I think everybody here wants to save money.
We do.
Okay, then let's do it. They didn't act like it. How much of a raise did you guys get in this last tax raise? How about, how about Mr. Hurtman here? Did anybody get a raise on this last tax raise?
Not, nobody up here except for the clerk.
That's what I wanted to know. That was never mentioned in the.
It was at the workshop.
Yeah, well, I look, I was out of tone at that time, so I couldn't make that. I'd love to have been here for it.
So no raises for the council.
Be here to start a big argument and stuff. I'm just asking a question and wanna know why. Every time he talks, y'all get upset with him. And actually, he has a right to his opinion, just like every one of you do up here. Right? Am I wrong?
You're not wrong. You're not wrong at all, and it's, it's good to bring things up, but.
You know, it, it's sad that this village has got to sit here and hate one man on the council the way you guys do.
Couple months ago, everybody in this town hated me because of you guys.
What did I do to hate you? What did I do to cause somebody to hate you?
Kidding me? Are you kidding me?
Yeah, what did I do? You know, I didn't do a thing. All I did is talk at this meeting. I had nothing to do with anything that's going on on the outside. That was your being.
I'm sorry, but if Mr. Jenderski would talk about things that were feasible and understanding, he doesn't pay attention and read his emails.
Yeah.
It would make more sense.
How do you know that? You're just blowing smoke. You don't know what the hell you're even talking about. I read everything. You have no idea what you're talking about. Don't accuse me of not reading. Damn, well, I read everything, so zipper, zipper.
That's enough.
I have a co- um question for the council.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, were you done?
I was done.
Well, thank you.
I have a question from the council. Mark Westlock, twelve sixty North Main Street.
Thank you.
Forty-two years. How old are you?
Almost forty-four.
Oh, boy.
I know, right? I'm excited.
I've got a question in the um, does this council have a comp time arrangement with uh our village manager where he gets time off on Fridays?
What's comp time? Explain.
In our village.
Comp time is, is that if he.
I know what it is. Explain it to him.
Compensatory time is what the real word is, and we do have arrangement in everybody's personnel handbook that they sign when they get here.
It's not acceptable. You know, a person that is a salary person gets the job done regardless of the number of hours that he has. Comp time does not affect salary people. Bottom line.
How many hours do you think you put in in a week, in all the meetings and that?
I hit my forty.
I'm not taking, I know you do more than forty, but.
Well, then you throw in.
On the average, how many, how many do you think you do?
With weekends, Facebook and emails and Facebook messages.
Stuff that you have to be here for.
Oh, to be here?
You have to be here for. The council meetings and all, all the other little goodies.
I mean, you throw in.
Your money through Friday most of the time?
Yeah, most of the time.
Every Friday?
Then you throw in the meeting, so so tonight, we're a few hours over, so you count that in. Rather than get, pay me overtime, cause I don't get overtime, I'm salary.
What do you think you do a week?
The longer you ask foolish questions.
Forty, forty-four, forty-five. Forty-four, forty-five out of normal.
Forty-five?
Out of normal week.
I've lived here for a number of different village managers. Uh the best, in my opinion, was Hal Mead. Everything got done. And it was a subjective kind of uh evaluation, but I can tell you right now, when I go to an office on Friday afternoon to find out if my village manager's here and he's not here, that's a problem. And and not, well, part of that problem is, is everything isn't getting done.
Now, what's that? What's everything?
Well, we're not competitive, number one. Our taxes are higher.
Says you.
We're losing, we're losing uh uh population. We've got a.
People like you.
Problem. You're awful arrogant, pal. For a president, it's supposed to be neutral. You're awful arrogant.
So are you.
I'm a private citizen.
Really?
Well, I've worked under two village managers, and I'd say Hart's the best one we've had, and I've seen so far. Just. I mean, I think he's getting a lot done. I have to say, he's just a lot of big things getting done.
Things he didn't do either, I'm asking, so.
A lot of money. Just gotta get through this big stuff, and he's getting it done for us.
Some of it, some of it, I'm not saying he's not, but there's some things that the people ask and doesn't even look into it. I, I, I think he's a great guy. I think he does good for the village.
That job never.
This is crazy for.
I just did, so shut up!
Calm down, Paul. We don't have to ask you to leave.
That job never gets done. No matter how many hours he puts in, he's never gonna have enough. All I'm saying is that subjectively, you know, everything is not getting done. Uh I believe I put into an evaluation that there's a ri- uh guard rail in the park that's been missing for ten years. Hal Mead would have done uh a daily tour of the village to pick up on those things and get it replaced.
Bart, didn't you check on that guardrail?
Where's that at?
Uh, he said was the backside of the park, I believe.
It's right by the ring. Yeah, right, right by, right by the ring. It's been, it's been missing for at least ten years plus, plus.
What was your evaluation of that, Mr. Thurston?
There is a guardrail there.
Yeah, there is.
No, there isn't. It, it's the fence. It's the wooden fence right by, uh apparently the tree branch had broken, you know, broken down, knocked the, the fence down. It's right by um.
Is that safety issue mark?
I can, I can point it out. I've been, I don't, I walk past it every day. It's been uh down for ten years.
Safety issue mark? Is it gonna hurt somebody?
It's just missing. It's just missing. It should be replaced. It's, it's a ten dollar item.
It's there, but it should be replaced. Is that what?
Yeah, all I have to do, it's only a small thing, but it's a thing that I've been able to point out because you guys have a question on what's not getting done.
Small things do make a big difference in this town. That's all I can tell you. They do. A lot of it's asked by the people, not pushed on by other people.
Love some Twitter.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed?